Good evening, everyone. This is the regular monthly meeting of the New York Parking Authority. Welcome to to the event and we'll get kicked off with public comment. If there's anyone who wishes to to speak, please raise your hand and you'll be let in. So so I take it that there aren't any?
I don't see, I don't see anybody, Eric.
Okay. All right, so then we'll move on. So if we could have a motion or discussion on the minutes from the October meeting?
I'll make a motion that we accept the minutes as submitted.
Thank you, Matt. Can I have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Pam, and all in favor, aye?
Aye.
So that carries. So, Stathi, you ready to jump in?
Yep, we are ready to jump in and I'm going to apologize, excuse me, in advance. You're not going to see my my mug today because I look horrible from last night. And I caught something, but for those that I embraced, don't worry, it wasn't COVID, I already tested myself, so.
Okay.
It's just kind of cold.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, Stathi, can we hold on one second? Eric, I'm sorry, I didn't see, we do have one attending when we were sharing screen, I could not see, let me just make sure she doesn't want to speak.
Okay, sure.
Missy, yes, Diane Cece's raising her hands, I'm going to allow her to speak.
Okay, please.
Diane?
Hi, good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I think I gotta adjust my sound here, can you, can you hear me okay?
Yes, yes, thank you.
Okay, hang on. Okay, thank you. Hope you all had a nice Thanksgiving and the holiday weekend. I just wanted to follow up on an email that I sent into to the Parking Authority Board regarding the possibility of adding Small Business Saturday into the calendar next year as a potentially free parking day within the city to support local businesses. I think I had mentioned, you know, probably most useful would be, I guess, South Milwaukee area and Wall Street, Main Street, West Avenue, but there's probably pockets in other areas as well and certainly over here in East Milwaukee. So I just wanted to take an opportunity to ask if that could be taken into consideration. I was actually kind of surprised, I think I noted that that it that it wasn't already part of whatever program you have that's either free or reduced parking. And hopefully that would be one of a number of dates in 2023 that you could consider. I think it would be helpful in supporting the businesses, especially for folks like myself that are reluctant to do so, given the parking requirements within the city. And then oops, am I still on? I'm sorry.
Yeah, you're here.
I still, okay, and then just to follow up on the minutes and the items of discussion from last meeting when I spoke. I just wanted to clarify under the item, the discussion that you had regarding residential permit parking within the city that that you're going to take up and consider for next year, that I just wanted to clarify that I was referring to pockets of neighborhoods throughout the city where that would probably be useful for a whole host of reasons and that I just want to make sure that I was clear that I wasn't referring to just the the beach parking areas seasonally. Because residential parking is certainly an issue in East Milwaukee in a number of areas. The older sections of the community in particular, where there's either limited, you know, onsite parking or garage parking or driveway parking. And there's numerous multifamily housing. And so it creates, you know, a lot of issues with parking on the street that doesn't leave any parking for the residents. So just wanted to make sure I was clear on that. And then the the other part of that is in relationship to beach parking. You folks are probably aware of the fact that in the state legislature, it was either last session or the session before where there was an effort to take a look at at banning any potential future, you know, residential only parking as a restriction for beach access. So I know it's a controversial item. And I don't think that's what people were intending to do necessarily when we talk about permits. So I just wanted to say that, thank you for letting me hop in there. And I hope you have a good evening.
Thank you so much. Have a nice evening. Okay, so back to you, Stathi, Rocky.
Okay. So from a budget perspective, revenue for the month has been is down for the month, but it's up year to date. Expenses have also been favorable to budget for the month, they're down, and they're also down year to date. The net operating surplus and fund balance are very favorable and just a reminder again, I know we talked about it last month, but you know, that balance will continue to accumulate to the extent that there's more operating profits in the next few months. But that will be spent down later in the fiscal year, once we finalize repair and maintenance projects, special projects and those plans, which will probably be in quarter three. From a month and year to date comparison, compared to last year, total revenue is down about 3.8% year to date. And violation revenue is a component of that, about 113,000 down, you know, which is a good sign. All the other revenue components are up, monthly is up, meters up. So that's, that's good. Compared to pre-COVID and looking oh, budget variances, I'm sorry. Rocky, if you want to move down the budget variances, there are, there were no revenue variances that met the the criteria, but on the expense side, there, there were a few. Security services, equipment expense, service contracts and the parking program. There, the security services year to date, even though for the month it's over, it's it's under year to date. But both service contract expense and parking program expense are a little bit over budget year to date. So year to year to date, the service contract expense item is a little bit over for the month and year to date, same with parking programs.
Service contract.
Did you see that on page three?
Yeah, I do, I do. I'm just, is this something that's gonna gonna grow or is it? Is it because there's something unrealized yet or?
Yeah, there was a payment for the the preventative maintenance service on the parking equipment that was made and that's usually a larger payment and that's why it's up, you know, so much for the month, but year to date, it's only up like a few thousand dollars. So we don't expect that to be you know, out of whack come year end.
Okay. All right.
All right, and compared to pre-COVID, October, this, you know, this last month compared to October 2019, you know, revenue is down about 21% or overall were at about 79% of pre-COVID levels and expenses are also down favorable to budget. And let's see transient activity. That compared to pre-COVID were just about level, it's actually up a little bit, about a little under a percent. But revenue is actually down about 24%. And a lot of that is really due to the South Milwaukee Railroad Station, where, you know, the average ticket price is so much higher. From permit perspective, that's really hasn't changed much, still lagging behind pre-COVID levels. Then on-street activity is actually up 15% and revenue is up 20% compared to pre-COVID. And you can see.
This is City One.
And this is, yes, yes. And then moving on to enforcement and, you know, the judge report, the infamous judge report. It's the ratios up a little bit in in October. Seems to follow some seasonal trends, still you know, lower than 2022. So, I'm sorry, yeah, 2022. So not really alarmed by it at this point. And let's see, pay by sell is still strong and I think was there anything on the agenda, James? I don't remember about the changing of the zones, but that, yeah, we'll see if that has an impact, we'll be able to drill down into different block faces and see where that activity is coming from.
We will be getting into that a little later.
The two of us, we are a mess.
Stathi, I'm sorry, just one quick question on page seven, I'm sorry to do this to you.
Oh, no problem.
I get credit card and billing coin in the bottom left pie chart, what's the other 30% PBC, is that pay by sell?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
Yeah, it's pay by sell and text to park map.
Okay, and so how is that different than credit card? It's just, you're you're just calling out credit cards used at the pay station?
Yeah, they said, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, maybe we need to look at, maybe we need to rethink that to make it a little more clear, now that you bring that up, but we can look at that, excuse me.
You could, you could just call it credit card at meter or something, because you're talking about the ones that the card physically goes in the meter.
It's, well, it's actually, yeah, exactly.
Yeah, so credit card at meter or something like that.
Yeah, pay, pay, pay by sell is the app, the mobile app.
Yeah.
Mobile, mobile parking.
I mean, it's still credit card based, pay by sell and text to park, but I think we're just trying to give you an idea of the difference between at the meter, maybe you're right, maybe we just need to clarify that. So, okay, so we were back to judge report and we passed that to the pay by sell. And that was it, that was pretty, pretty quick, I didn't mean to go so quickly, but I know you have a lot on the agenda.
No, I think that's good. At one point, we had talked about a, I think it was a graphic related to judge, to the judge chart that would show concentration in by area where, where where tickets, issued tickets were concentrated. So that we could then understand that situation, if there was a cluster, you know, month over month, then it would tell us that maybe there's something wrong at that particular point. Has there been any more dialogue about that?
Yeah, so I think, and I'm sure maybe James will touch on it, but I think once we get these new zones in place, we'll be able to provide, I think, a better picture by, you know, hotspot.
Right, right now, we can do it.
Only for Sono.
Only in the Sono area. And but because the Wall Street area is all just one big zone, there's no way to differentiate what what street or block that anybody's been parked on.
Okay. So that's, but all right, so that's still in the, it's still on the table for.
Yeah, that's gonna start, and that's gonna start in a couple of days.
Pardon? Don't, I mean, you could give us the data as the Wall Street area is one area and and then show us the breakdown through South Norwalk, right?
Okay, yeah, we can certainly do that. I can work with Rocky on that.
It's, so that would then indicate, are there or is there a potential for Wall Street to be divided into zones or is it one zone for a reason?
Well, we'll be getting into that on one of the agenda items coming up.
Okay, all right, sorry.
That's it, that's all I have unless there's some questions.
I just have one, one question, not so much related to financials, but I was with with the a client earlier who was describing to me that out of a 300 unit building that they built and operate, there's a something like 20% of the residents not only don't have cars, but they don't have driver's license. And these are young, apparently this is a young market. And so it made me wonder, is there any information that you know of about people who are going through their twenties particularly without even, without, without a driver's license?
Yeah.
The, and it just, it just was an interesting point. Because that certainly would impact the demand for parking in the future. If that's a real thing, and this was only one project, so it's not necessarily you know, a large cross sample, but in in your world with, you know, dealing with, you know, the other cities and what have you, you know, is there, is there some tracking of the number of younger people who are who don't have a driver's license?
I mean, I don't know how detailed we can get, there's, there's kind of, I guess, empirical, you know, evidence from developers and things, I think the closer we're seeing that trend, the closer these residences are to transit oriented developments, which, you know, would make sense. But I'd have to think about how how we capture that data, I don't know, is there anything out there? Maybe Jim or James knows.
Yeah, okay, anyway, just, just, sorry, put it out there.
Eric, I can elaborate a little bit more because there is, you know, we do follow the national trends and we haven't, we have seen a national trend of people getting their driver's license at a much later date than before. I think we also saw COVID had, you know, a resurgence of vehicles being sold to maybe populations that that typically didn't have them or or get them before, which some, in some instances, instances led to the rise in in used vehicle prices on an incline, but we've also, we've seen that. I think as a city, we've, you started to adopt that with some, you know, lesser parking requirements for for developments. And I have had in recent weeks conversations with our planning and zoning of requirements that we will be imposing on to developers to give us parking counts. You know, 12 months after, you know, after they open. And we have been talking internally about how we might want to look at maybe some point in time parking counts where we would look at what, you know, part parking, you know, on a particular Wednesday and at 12 o'clock and and, you know, that that same day every year to start looking at where our garages are and getting access to private garages to to see what those trends are as well. But I think, you know, we do look at it heavily, I know that Steve is looking at some parking reduction requirements with the zoning new changes that that are coming out to to address that, so we don't overpark particular areas. But to your point, yes, we have seen you people getting a driver's license at later dates. No longer are they like me chopping at the bits at 16 to get my driver's license.
Right, okay, it just was an interesting little tidbit. Okay, cool, then, Stathi, again, while we still have you on in the front and center, thank you so much for both of the events, the festival and America on Wall Street. They were both fantastic and and I think extremely well received. And Jim, certainly for for all of your hard work too that went into that, it really, both events were fantastic. Rocky, thank you, you too.
Yeah, I think Jim was the the real hero organizing this thing in like six weeks, that he's the mastermind. We were just there, we were just there as elves.
Well, you were there as a lot more than elves and, you know, I think on behalf, you're following suit to the Parking Authority, I think there is much appreciation for making this happen. I think us highlighting holiday events within the two business districts that we have, you are very well received and, you know, it'll give, you know, I think in many instances gave businesses a little bit more exposure and hopeful, hopefully we'll give them more exposure and people more events to look forward to. But I think, you know, on the city's behalf, Stathi, much appreciation for those events, I think that they were long overdue and very well received by the community.
Yeah, thank you, thank you very much, Jim. And those businesses in Wall Street, Wall Street in particular, they, I think, were jamming that yesterday, on yesterday.
Good.
They were busy, yeah.
Yeah, well, I also saw some people walking up and down the street, which was really great, and they took breaks from the, from the event themselves and started to experience, and I think that was all intention, right? See, see some things and you know, I think Wall Street really looks great. I think the interesting component of that is looking at the number of other businesses that started to decorate for the holidays that that might not have decorated in years past. So I think this, it goes again when, you know, municipalities make an investment in in areas in in a variety of different things, you property owners start making those subsequent investments and overall, we we climb. And I think we climb pretty high, maybe even as high as Santa Claus.
All right, well, great, thank you, thank you. So James, next on the on the agenda. So engineering report, Jim, James said you might want to rearrange some order here to talk about something?
Yeah, I just wasn't sure if, I knew Jim was running a little late, I wasn't sure if he was going to be back in time to to discuss the next, the next topic.
Okay.
Jim, do you wanna, do you want to jump in on this one or do you want to move it last and give yourself some time to?
No, we can, we can write this, so this is the Yankee Doodle of construction documents, so, you know, this is the, you know, the next phase of, of, you know, where we were and, you know.
Sorry, Jim, I don't mean to interrupt, do you want me to open up the the document?
Yes, please, please, that's. So as as James begins to open up to activate, this is, you know, the next phase. So as you recall, you know, the board had approved the funding to start looking at the design and looking at the overview. THA was the consulting firm that that did the the design. And so after, you know, what I believed to be a really impressive outreach and communication engagement to to get the community's involvement on on what they wanted to, you know, see this as betterments to to the garage. You know, we got to, I think, a really great, great place and the the next in line for this is to move the concept into a construction document so that these, so this could be bid by contractors to start the implementation process. So we would be looking for the Parking Authority to vote on the agreement with THA to move the concept plans into design documents to allow us to go out to bid. And, you know, I think we have the funding set aside for for both. So we, we're in a great place for that. And I think this really ties in very well in timing to the additional improvements that are being made and planned for in the, in the Wall Street area. Just for your edification, in the timeframe, we are at ConDOT right now for the final approval of Phase One, which is the section of East Wall Street from Brook to Main Street. That's really starting to integrate the new, somewhat of the new design. So you have sidewalk design, street lighting design, you know, and you, you have better use of of travel lanes and you know, we are looking at the if the direction of Knight and High are correct and we will be doing some outreach to the to the businesses there to to make that, we, if you've been down that way lately, utilities are at work down there working on the underground, the thing that we don't want to do is you know, be in a situation where we build something only to have the utilities rip up the road to to do the utility work. So there have been a lot of underground utility work being done out in that area, so that will at this point in time, what we're really estimating is that that's going to be back from ConDOT in January. Should all go according to plan, right? And then, you know, we anticipate responding to any last comments that they may make, we're hopeful that we got everything out there, we'll advance that into the spring for a bid to start construction on that portion of of Wall Street in 2023. Simultaneously, we're looking, you know, we have a next community meeting to be presented, you know, with a project at large in March and should be, should we be, you know, continuing to be on track with that, we think that we will be. We will move the intersection into, into construction first, as we have secured some additional funding funding for that to happen. And then we simultaneously are wrapping up a a second lots of application, which would continue the project down. And then we have Congressman Himes, who is moving forward with the $5.5 million federal appropriation that is included in this budget. Should this federal budget pass, this is his priority project for for him. And that would give us, you know, what appears to be like, you know, you know, a good portion of the remaining money, but as we see as it lands through, but the timing of this will be in play with 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 the other work. So I think you simultaneously, we're really going to be looking at transforming the greater Wall Street area and, you know, this will also, you know, when we do the intersection of Wall at Belden, there that will simultaneously turn Burnell into two-way, which will really highlight this entrance and exit and return it to probably the primary entrance and exit for for the facility. You know, it's harder to use now as Burnell is a one-way, but, you know, I think at this point, all the stars are aligning and things are happening, but what we need the the board to do at this time is advance the contract with THA to begin the design process. We have been through the various aspects of the design and scrutinizing the the various components. And we think we're at a point, so James, could we go down to the page for the 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 design total for the board to understand? All right, so that's the project in total, but with the the portion of it for the design services. Okay, so so this is the, so this is the, what we would be looking for the the board to do, so this is each of the components broken out, the facility survey and aesthetic program confirmation is that everything done has to have a survey, we need to make sure that what we're getting for is is the right, that what we're installing is on the right thing. It would also include the construction document phase, which is all of the the documents necessary for construction. And then the final portion of it is the bidding and construction administrative phase. So you see the 96,000 is the, is it basically, you know, the detailed construction documents? And then THA will assist in bidding and then they would also assist in the construction administration to to ensure that what is designed is actually built. So in total, we're looking for the board to to approve a professional fee of 100 A a professional fee of one hundred thirty nine thousand five hundred dollars for the design services.
What's the total cost of construction estimate?
So the the down to the next page. So we're looking, no, I'm sorry, next page. This is the outlined items. So the the total cost of construction. Uh which we've included in here, uh contingency design fees, uh our design, um you know, the the design fees uh portion, the one forty two. Uh the contingency uh the and the the general conditions of one thirty two. So. You know, we have the the sub can the subtotal of the the facade and aesthetic improvements at one point three million. Um you know, total project cost at one point eight with the contingencies. Um but you know, those contingencies are there as uh security measures, uh sometimes uh not spent as uh. You was evident in the recent sidewalk um. Installation uh that we did on Highland, uh we did not need any of our contingencies and as such came in under budget. Uh so we would hope to uh to you manage this in a uh you know, cost effective. Uh value engineered way to to maintain uh the cost as low as possible. And then there are other items that are just broken down. Should we have things? But this is what we anticipate that the construction cost, obviously. Um you know, this is you know what we have the the best guess uh for uh for 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 services. The true value contract cost would come uh when when we bid it.
Right. So so the alright, so that's the scope and the fee. So um. The timing again, the once we approve this, once this is approved, there. They'll start immediately kind of thing or?
They'll they'll start, they'll start immediately to design. Um could you go back up uh James to the? Uh the design estimate, I just want to give the board the the time that they're looking up back back. Look, I think there's. Uh qualification proposal shall be valid. Oh, that's there's a that's the six months of submission date, but there's a there's a. A time in the contract. I think it's above this portion, James. Of uh so they have approximately, but the that there you go, pre post uh like could you just a post construction phase on the bottom? I think what we have here is approximately eleven month up to substantial complete uh. Oh, that will be the 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 completion up further. Uh given the scope of the enhancement project as outlined herein is an anticipated project duration of four to five months. Um with uh and they budgeted ten progress meetings and field visits. Uh so you you know, once we give the go ahead. Uh the construction documents should be ready in four to five months.
Construction document. Okay, so then we're gonna have some monthly expenses that are gonna. For for. Or do you take all this money at once or do you take it?
So 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 no, they 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 will bill as so yeah, so they will bill. And we will, we will analyze those bills and and they will bill as as uh as the, you know, project ensues, but uh. You you it's that it's not all at once, but there is funds available for for this to occur without uh we're we're not anticipating this. We're not you, we're not anticipating additional um. Um forecasted revenue to cover this is the the cost of this is already uh anticipated.
Okay, okay. And then will we be, will we have, will we be authorizing those? Will will do we have a? A role in authorizing those payments or is it once we, once we authorize this, then it's managed completely. Outside of us and um and then we're only, what's our role?
So typically you typically you will approve the the uh the management of one hundred and thirty nine thousand five that we you we will manage those. Uh those payments to that, uh we could app we could, you know, we can certainly update the board on a periodic basis to where we are. What we're doing um uh you typically, uh you know, once the contract is issued, you're you're approving the one thirty nine. And that's just managed administratively.
Okay.
And and chances are good that that this will come up in uh in Stath's finance report under the um. Um under the ten percent discrepancy. When these payments come through. So we if they they will be listed as we as we go through, so you know when we're making the payments.
Okay. So we need to, so you're asking that we ask on this tonight?
Yeah, so we're asking for a motion to approve the one thirty nine five for THA. For design services uh for the Yankee Doodle Garage facade improvements.
Um so is there or is there any discussion, any questions from anybody?
I have questions about the construction cost, but I could ask that after we vote on this.
I mean, it seems to me it's it's slightly over ten percent of construction value, which which isn't necessarily out of line. So I don't. I don't, there's no red flags that I see.
Yep. So we want to make a motion then?
Um yeah, if there's no 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 further discussion yet, please.
All right, I will make a motion to approve the professional fees for uh THA. Uh totaling one thirty nine five.
I'll second that.
All in favor? Uh so that carries. Uh great, thank you, everyone. Thank you, Jim.
Um I just the the one point eight million dollar budget.
Yep, could you bring that up again for Judd um James? Further down, yep.
Yeah, I who who put that together? THA or?
THA THA put that together, yes.
Okay, okay.
Uh so so they put that, you know, this is put together by, you know, what what they see is typical, you know, uh uh you know, what what they anticipate. You know, and seeing other construction jobs go through, you know, I think um you know, we all know, you probably, you know, as as well as us. Said, you know, the construction costs are are a little, you know, crazy at this time, um uh harder to pinpoint than I think in years past. Um but uh you know, so so that's why we have, you know, e- each of them are shown as as broken out. So you know. And this is how each of them will be bid um into those components. So you know, if there is additional, uh you know, expenses. That are occurred in one, we have the ability to to make modifications to the others and and there might be some that are put off to a later date. Uh to 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 make happen, but uh also these are bulked uh into into various categories to make sure that. At least you one component of it is is done, so.
So this will, this will be the bidding format more or less.
So this will be the bidding format, um that you know, they don't get the anticipated costs um in the bid format. Uh so we'll put it what once the once that's through, we will work through an RFP uh with them to seek this uh from. A variety of different contractors. So we would look to to get uh you a number of contractors to bid on uh on the job. Uh and I think this is, you know, I think from a contractor perspective, this is pretty, this is, you know, it's an interesting uh. Uh uh project of transformation of an older garage uh into something. So we're we're we're. Uh we're hopeful that we'll see a number of uh of competitive bids into this.
Okay, um and then uh the contingency fifteen percent, did they give you any idea? Uh what they see as possible contingencies or?
So the contingencies are always, uh you know, when when we we range uh the same as state contracts. So the state looks at ten to twenty percent contingency. We just split that into the into the middle, you know, the contingencies just go there for something that is, you know. Um and you know, not anticipated uh.
Yeah, no, I I would. Just wondering if they gave you some examples of what those might be or?
Uh um you know, they they you know, it could be um you know, uh. Uh an issue with the, you know, this is anticipated that all the ribs are secured and in place in the garage. And you know, should should a rib not be uh secured and they have to resecure one of the ribs, uh that would come out of uh out of contingency. Um you know, I think that when we, you know, we have, um you know, we we've done a walkthrough, we've done everything, we've anticipated. You know, any railing issues, um but you know, should we, you know, like, for example, you know, they have that page fence that's in there. And so we're not anticipating replacing that page fence today, but if we're in the project and we say, God, we just made everything else beautiful. And that makes the page fence look crappy. We want to either paint it or we want to replace it. Those those items come out of contingency.
Yeah, okay.
But nothing anticipated at this time. We put it everything that we we expect uh would be needed um. That but that's our little surprise catchall bucket.
That intro that fifteen percent is the exact number I use too, so.
Okay.
Good, okay, thank you.
Alrighty.
Excellent, thank you, Jim.
So thank you, gentlemen. I think uh the uh the Wall Street people will be very happy to start seeing the these projects advance in their community.
Yeah, I was I was driving there the other day. You can see the top of that garage from pretty far back on. Uh on uh West Avenue, so it.
Yeah.
It'll be, it'll be significant.
Yeah, I I I think so.
You can see it from the uh Route Seven connector too.
Yeah, beautiful.
Yep.
Beautiful. Okay, uh James, do you are you up to the Haviland Deck?
I am. Excuse me. Um so the the file update on the Haviland Deck membrane repair is we are done. Um that's that's been all set. We are actually doing a walkthrough. I believe it's Friday. With our um snowplow contractor to go over what we can do. To help mitigate the damage to the membrane. So it, you know, if they go through and just claw the thing up again, we're just gonna be here, you know, this time again next year. So. We're trying to see what we can do to put in some uh some mitigation steps to make sure that that doesn't happen in the future. But it is done. It looks great. The leak that we had underneath seems to have been resolved. Um so that's it for that one.
So those parking spaces are back in commission again, right, James?
Yes.
Okay, great.
Excellent, thank you. Uh if there are no questions on that, we could move on to the train station.
Perfect. Um the, excuse me, the the concession area at the South Norwalk train station. Um the change order has been finished. Uh we've finished the. Um the the cost estimate. Um and we're just waiting for DPW to finish um reconciling the end of the the South Norwalk garage project as a whole. Um to see what what money we have left over, but we believe that we'll actually be able to roll that change out into that project and and there won't be any other. Um extra costs um associated with um with this project. Um so that will get looped into into that project and we'll be able to um. Hopefully start that uh um within the next month or two. That will obviously change depending on uh on the contractor. We're still waiting for uh the the rough timeline from him. From Capasso.
Okay, great.
What's the the plan for the concession? Because I see our tenant has moved out um. And the concession area is vacant. Uh what what's the plan there and the build out? I I'm not aware of this.
Um so we are where where Metro North's um ticketing area is. On the New York bound side. Um that's no longer in service. So what we're doing is we're actually cutting that wall and moving that wall back. And we're making a very specific concession area where all of the um all of the vending machines are gonna go. That way, it's you don't have to kind of, it's it's a very clear and obvious, like, hey, this is where all the vending is. It just had, that way it has a home instead of just kind of tucked in the corner over here. Or tucked in a corner over there. And then on the eastbound side. Um the window to where the old dry cleaner was. Um I believe it was a dry cleaner. Um we're actually going to be taking that wall and moving that wall back. And then we're gonna, we're gonna inset the vending machines in that area. And then that's that way each side is going to have its own um vending. Um space again, so they're not just, so you know, because some are up right now on the uh on the second level on the eastbound side and some are down low. Um you know, it makes it a little more difficult for um if people are handicapped and they want a soda, they have to go up the ramp if they want to. This way it brings it down a level and just makes things a little bit more convenient and puts them all in the same spot. Excuse me.
And and the coffee shop area uh, any updates on that is? Our leasing agent, you know, actively looking for someone to fill that or are we abandoning that or?
Oh, no, um we actually had a uh 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 we've had multiple tenants already come and look at the area or potential tenants, I'm sorry.
Great.
Already covered, look at the area. In fact, there was one there tonight at about five fifty.
Okay.
Um so the advertisement's going well and 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 people are are very interested. So hopefully soon we'll have some some movement on that.
Good. Okay, thanks.
Okay, cool, thank.
All right, um.
So then the chamber commerce?
Yes, um give me one second to uh switch my screen. All right, um so we we received a request um from the Chamber of Commerce. For um a discounted parking rate for the uh for an event that they're going to be having at the Maritime Garage. Um and so I spoke to him and we went back and forth on kind of logistics and how it'll work. Um and we we came on an idea and we wanted to run it um by the board for discussion and vote. Uh but basically what what he's looking for are um. Um for parkers to to get a discounted rate of a of a of a dollar, which would be a fifty percent rate uh discount. Uh to park at the Maritime Garage. And um what we would do is we would issue him what we call chaser tickets. So at closer to the to the event, um we would provide him with uh the same amount of chaser tickets. That is um the the people you going to the event would use. And they would come into the garage as normal, print the ticket, pull in, park, go about their business. Receive the chaser ticket at the event and then on their way out, they would scan the chaser ticket instead of the parking ticket that they received. And that will let them out of the garage. And normally that would uh at that time, it would take them to to midnight uh as an expiration time. So basically what this does is it will provide them uh one dollar parking at a fifty percent discounted rate. And then it will allow them to kind of go out in Sono, um because they're if they want to after the event, because they will be paid up until midnight. Um the event is uh they're they're anticipating about one hundred and twenty five people. Um and the event is Wednesday, December fourteenth. From five thirty to eight P M. Uh so I I I'm assuming there will be some some questions or um a a discussion. Is there any any questions that that you guys have that I can answer?
So we need to act on this, right?
Yeah, i- if you if you guys, I mean, this is just something I came up with him. He he thought it was a good idea. And obviously I wanted to bring it to the board, but i- if you guys want to have a discussion on it and kind of come up with something, I'm I'm all ears.
Well, I can see the garage from my window and it's empty. So if we could get a hundred and twenty five cars, we can get a hundred and twenty five cars for a dollar. I'd be in favor of that.
I mean, you know, and it's a it's it's a nice, it's a nice experience for the people who want, you know, obviously, I I think it's important to. To support the Chamber of Commerce. I think it's an easy way for. For the people at the venue to, you know, quote unquote, pay for parking. Um and we'll we'll just bill him after the fact for however many chaser tickets are used. So we we have the exact amount, so there's no discrepancy. Um and it's a good advertising portion because he's like, oh, great, I'd love to be able to push to tell everyone, you know, go out in Sono, we have this deal, you guys are paid for parking. Go visit some of the local businesses. So you know, I I I think it's a, I think it's a win all around for everybody.
So am I I am I understanding that um in the end, the chamber is gonna will be. Will be whatever the quantity of cha- chaser tickets there are, they'll be the ones providing that that. That cost or that revenue.
That's correct.
Yeah, and um. And Wednesday, Wednesday evenings are probably not that much different. And Wednesday, Wednesday evenings are probably not that much different than Tuesday evenings. Um so it's not as though it's taking anything away from. Um from a busy time in the garage. Are there, is there a precedence issue we should consider that might bite us in the future or? By not making it, by making it still pay. That I think that's consistent with things we've done in the past already. Is that true?
Yes, it is, that I think that that is consistent, obviously. You know, free parking is is a much much bigger issue, uh but this is just providing a discounted rate to help facilitate people. To uh to use the the businesses in South Norwalk.
Okay. Does anybody have any? Any thoughts?
Matt, Pam, you guys are awfully quiet tonight, I'm I'm suspect.
Uh I have a question. Um if they come back after twelve P M. Do they pay the full rate or do they get the chaser plus whatever charges after twelve?
That one's for Rocky.
Um Pam, the chaser will give him the discount that two dollar off and whatever hours they stay after that, they'll have to pay up using a credit card or cash.
Okay, so anything after twelve, they'll have to pay.
That is correct, yes.
Okay. I think it's a good idea.
But will they be made aware of that, is there some? Way we can make them aware of that, you know, so they don't have a unpleasant surprise?
Yes, wh- when I um when I respond, depending on the outcome of this vote, when I respond to uh. To the chamber, I will let them know very specifically so they can let the patrons know as they give them the chaser.
Okay.
We'll give them a little, you know, rules and regulations cheat sheet.
Okay, good, yeah, I I think it's good, I mean, on a Wednesday night, it is, right, it's the fourteenth?
Yes.
And the garage. Ghost town over there, as Eric can attest.
Well, I can show it to you if you like, I have a camera.
Pick up your computer and.
Yeah.
No, I've been there, so I I it'll get my vote and uh. You know, I think I wouldn't want to do it. On a Wednesday, middle of the day in the summer, you know, when the garage is full of kid, you know. Parent families taking their kids, but I think in the evening like this, it's a it's. A good thing and it's not completely free, so.
So is that a motion?
Yeah, I'd make a motion to approve the discounted parking. At the Maritime Garage for the Chamber of Commerce on December fourteenth.
Um, okay, so before we take a second, um I'm on the Board of Directors for the Chamber, so um. So probably best that I abstain.
You have to abstain.
Yeah, a- as am I and I'm recusing myself from the vote, yeah.
Yeah. So um. So there's two left.
I'll second the motion. So there's. Is that a court, can we can we do that?
What's the uh precedent for this?
Yeah, what's the?
I'm not sure, Jim, do you have any idea what the? What the rules would be in this situation?
Um, let me double check Robert's rules in the morning, uh I I'd left without my uh book if we. Uh so what I suspect that we could do is for Pam and Judd, uh you made a motion, you seconded a motion. Uh why don't both of you, uh you you could approve the motion uh pending review by review of Robert's rules. Um and uh if there is conflicts, I will uh I'll get in touch with you, um otherwise, uh we will we will accept it as a a motion.
Okay.
Okay, great, excellent, thank you. Um so then uh convenience fee.
Um so Eric, I know this was um this was something that you brought up, I don't know if you wanted to uh. You want to jump in and kind of tell your story real quick?
Well, I mean, I it it's just that, you know, when you when you you get you get, if you pay the ticket. You know, within twenty-four hours, I think it is after being issued the ticket. And you use your credit card, say, over the phone or or over the the online, you get charged a three dollar fee, so. Um so what's the point? And um at the and 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 the what makes it? The co- the what makes it sort of stand out is if you walk to the ticket window and use the same credit card. There is no fee. But now you have to get to the window in the garage, in the Maritime Garage and use the same credit card that. Um you would have used on the line on the phone, so my point was just that it doesn't make sense to me and um. I think we've talked about it before and and the explanation was that it's that it's the. Card processing or something like that, but it just seems it it seems in this day and age that that's a little outdated.
So I I will, um, excuse me. I'm gonna I'll I'll let uh Rocky and Stathi jump in in a second because I know that they they certainly know the system a little better than I do. Um but my 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 best guess and my understanding is that that three dollar convenience fee. Is there because we allow people to pay on the internet. And in order to do that, all of that information has to be hosted online. And along with it being hosted online, we do have to process um credit card information, which also means it has to be. Uh secure gateway and go through all of that, um all those security hurdles. Which is also, um there's also a cost associated to all of that. So I believe that my 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 assumption is that fee when you pay online. Is there to offset the costs to provide the convenience of the customer to be able to pay online and go online. And see their uh you know, see their citations, see all the information, host all that data. And provide real time access to the end user to all of that information.
So who gets the fee?
Uh so I I I I have all the entirety of the fee comes to comes to us, we collect it. And then it's parsed out and I'm sure a few different ways, um but but honestly, I'm not one hundred percent sure.
How how many tickets a year are paid online? I mean, how much are we collecting and if we were to do away with the fee, how much would we be losing?
Um Rocky, Stathi, do either of you guys have that?
Yeah, I mean, Rocky might know the number, but one thing I could add is that uh. If you wanted to eliminate it, we would have to go back to Dunkin, um because it's their. Online platform, um and the convenience fee um is charged as part of that contract.
Gotcha.
So who holds that contract, is that a contract with Laz or a contract with us?
Yeah, it's a it's a contract with us that goes back to when um. You know, this was originally bid and then extended.
So, alright, so we're not gonna solve it tonight, but um I think. I I mean, if everyone agrees, I you know, I think it. I think we should pursue a limit, the elimination of that three dollar fee, because I. I mean, we all use our credit cards all the time, online and on the phone and, you know, and this doesn't occur. Uh so whatever those measures are, James, that you mentioned. You know, uh you know, it just it it just seems like this is an outdated practice and it seems like it's an unnecessary burden on. People wanting to pay their uh fees this way.
So uh Eric, I think that is written into the existing contract, I think that we should look, I I agree with you, I think we should look at 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 what that is. But you know, I also think that, you know, we should use, excuse me. You know, the opportunity of the R P uh you know, in general, as we're looking at uh to to identify all those and make sure that. You know, rather than renegotiating a contract with an existing vendor, you know, start to look at is that existing vendor, the the vendor that we should have.
Okay.
Uh you in in entirety, right?
Okay.
I agree with you, they're they're older technologies and and you know, there 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 are many people that still do convenience fees, but you know, there are some that don't, right? So we should be looking at what could we do to provide that? That best practice and have a thorough understanding, but I think as we have it right now, uh the contract. Um I haven't see, I I'm gonna be, you know, honestly, I haven't seen the details of the Dunkin contract, but my experience with these contracts. Um you know, having signed many of them throughout the years, those are always in that that conveniency is embedded into the contract that we sign. Uh so we would have to renegotiate a contract and I think that we should look uh at it uh as on a larger scale. Um to to make sure that we're getting even the best value and even our best reporting, I think, you know. Uh technologies are out there, um you know, and and you know, in a very emerging emerging market uh with with parking. Uh and I think that we should look at this, you know, you know, this R P process in its entirety to look at making sure that we have state of the art practices. And and could look at that um versus um you know, trying to renegotiate a contract uh you know, at this time.
Yeah, I'm fine with if everybody, I'm fine with that.
Okay. But you 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 your your concerns are noted and um. I think we all want to have a state of the art system and and I applaud you guys for taking this one up, but I think it's one that did pass through us, so so we didn't see it, so um. Uh this is, we will make sure this stays on our radar uh for 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 the larger picture.
See, great, thank you. Okay, um the updates on the on the holiday events.
So I know uh I know Jim touched on this a little bit earlier, so um. I'm not, I'm not sure. Well, go ahead, Jim, I'll you take it.
Yeah, no, I I don't know that what 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 more we have to add, I think that I think that they were two. Hugely successful events, I think, you know, when we when we, you know, started to go with Miracle on Wall Street, we were not gonna have. Uh a ride, um and uh it was the success of the um. The uh merry-go-round at Sono that said we had to have a a a ride and so we got that, we got a boat. So on River Street, though, we we have the River Street Boat Cruise, um and that had the line till the very end. And so it was, you know, the the I think it was really great, I think the community loved it, it was. So wonderful because like BJ's did free hot chocolate, uh Thrift did free hot chocolate and coffee. Uh you know, so and I, you know, we saw people in the stores, you know, right up to the end. Um you know, the store owners talked about, you know, that that this was really great for them. Um and I think that it adds, you you that I heard time and time again from people in the community throughout the night. Uh uh you know, that, you know, this is, you know, I've heard from one, one person says, I've been here for twenty-two years and nothing like this has ever happened. And in, you know, this is so um. I thought it was, I thought it was really great, uh I have to give public uh uh props to Arc uh. Um Arc Soundstage Lighting, who uh did the the stage and and and. You know, we had this the this the uh the snow and the smoke and you know, the lights. Uh it was uh it was really, really great. Uh and uh he helped organize the artwork that's on the base for the tree out there. Um and it was really cool to see a lot of people out there taking their picture. Uh I think the tree on uh on Wall Street is looks uh fantastic. Uh we will have uh menorah lighting on there on that for a Hanukkah. Um you know, late or we're not in December, we're not in December yet, so in December, September eighteenth. Um but uh. Um massively successful, um you know, I think it really put Laz and the Parking Authority and. You know, a really great light of giving back to the community in which we serve. Um and uh so kudos to to everyone, uh I think it was a job well done.
Excellent, it really was and um it was it was fun to be at both of them, it was it it was really nice to see.
Yeah. Lots of smiles, right, Eric?
Oh, lots, lots of smiles, yeah. Definitely.
And Santa was very popular.
He usually is.
Both Santas.
Okay, good, um so James, the three hour changeover?
Yeah, so uh the. We are ready to rock for the three hour changeover in the in the signage update in Wall Street. Um we are, uh we were actually going to start the project today, but the weather didn't exactly cooperate. Um so starting bright and early tomorrow, uh Rocky and his team are gonna be out on the streets. Putting up the new signs, taking down the old signs, so now we will have. Everything will be standard, it will move away from the two hour, three hour to just three hour. Um and it will also break down the entire Wall Street zone of twenty forty. Into its own zones for each street, so it will mirror what we do in the rest of the city. So this will actually allow us to start tracking the data and really look and understand. Um when it comes to the, you know, the Judd Report, for example, are we? What direction are we going in when it comes to compliance now? Um and it will, it'll kind of point us in the right direction of are these signs having an effect? Are they are they properly spaced? Um you know, we'll just, we can really start to learn and understand. And depending on the the success of the of this three month trial, um you know, we make a decision at the end on whether we want to. Expand this standardization uh citywide for our for our. Parking signs, um or do we need to adjust? And we don't necessarily need to wait the entire three months, if we get two weeks in and everything's on fire and the world is falling apart. Obviously, we can adjust on the fly, um I don't expect that to happen, but you know, I'd like to be prepared. Um so I'm I'm really, really excited to uh to get this underway, uh you know, it's something we've been working on for a little while now. You know, I think it's, I think it's gonna. I I mean, not just for compliance purposes, but just for for sign pollution. I think it's, I think that is in its in and of itself is gonna make a world of difference. You know, when we were doing this process and going through and mapping where all the signs are, you know, we realized that this is the Wild West right now. Um so for for fun, um I will have an update for you at the next Parking Authority meeting where. Excuse me. Um we're actually gonna count. How many signs we put up to how many signs we took down and see what the net gain is, just for uh just for fun.
James?
Gain or loss?
Uh either way, but I something tells me that we're gonna be in the negatives.
Good.
There was a picture posted on the community Facebook page of Wall Street. Of the signage and how bad it was, yeah, I'll send it to you, it it was hysterical. It had ten signs and one on on one thing. It was really bad and and it just, it had so many. Posts to it, comments to it, it was.
Of course.
So you should use that picture and do do a before and after and post it on Facebook and I I'll share it on the community page.
Yeah, you know, that's a great idea, Pam, absolutely, take. I'll line it up, I'll try and take the exact same picture and we can take a look and see the difference that we made just in that one area.
Well, we should also just have it because, you know, that that's really, you're Pam, that has been something that we were, we've been working on for a while, is one of the things that I noticed. I think it is in particularly in 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 Wall Street. You know, i- i- it's it's horrendous, if you know, uh you know, it, we're not doing anybody any favors.
Well, that's why nobody wants to park down there, it's 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 like. Everybody just gives up and just, oh, I'll just go to Lowe's or I'll go somewhere else. So, but it was, it was a very, very contentious thread. I remember reading it and I'm like, I'm not gonna, I'm not even gonna comment.
What's that Facebook page called?
Well, there's the community Facebook page and there's I Love Norwalk page and they they have a tendency to post the same things. So I usually share the Parking Authority and City stuff. On the community page.
With Norwalk Community Page?
Yeah, it's Norwalk C T Community Facebook page, and then the other one is I Love Norwalk. So I think it was posted on both of them and it was just. So I, you know, and then a couple people texted me, are you gonna do something about this? And I'm like, well, yeah, we're working on it.
Well, Pam, it's gonna, it's gonna look like you have extremely fast response time, because tomorrow we're gonna be whipping signs out.
Yeah.
You said, I whipped them into shape, man, they're.
No, seriously, you know, because it it's all about community engagement and we've gotta make parking. Not so so onerous to to our.
Yeah, yeah.
And contentious, you know.
And confusing.
And confusing and, you know, I'm reading Diane Cece's, you know, letter about the other, you know, issue on on. You know, Small Business Saturday, a lot of people are are, you know. They they think twice about going down to Wall Street or or uh. They, they think twice about going down to Wall Street or, or, um. You know, down to Sono.
It, in years past, uh, the Parking Authority on that Small Business Saturday. Would, uh, bag the meters for. Two hours only and I.
I think we should do it all day.
I do too. I, I thought it was an embarrassment, actually. I, you know, it looked so stingy to me in the past, um, and I.
We should get bags that say free parking today, small business, you know, Saturday.
For the whole day.
For the whole day and, you know, because. You know, you want people to comply with parking and you've got to make it easy for them to park.
So I think we should carry the conversation to executive session.
Okay, yes.
At some point. Um, but yeah, uh, yeah, let's. Let's take that up for sure.
Uh, all right, uh, the next two are actually, um, pretty quick. Uh, the, the bike parking area in the South Norwalk, uh, train station is for, uh, for all intents and purposes up and running. The bike racks are installed, the bike repair station is installed, all the paint is up. The, uh, the, the decals are up. The only thing that isn't completed as of this time. Is the, uh, the concrete pillar post wrap that we're putting on there. Um, the, the contractor's having a, a bit of a difficult time. Um, using the, finding the correct material. Um, but he is one hundred percent confident that he will get it and we expect, he, he expects to be able to have that completed within the next two weeks. Um, if you haven't had a chance to go by. Um, I mean, you may want to wait till the pillar is done. Um, but it, it came out. Better than I could have expected. The second you pull into that garage, it im- it immediately grabs your eye. With the painting of the walls, the floor, um, it's just, it, it looks great and I, I. I'm shocked. At how well it came out, um.
Nice.
And now, now people know where our bike parking is. Um, it took me four months to find it when I first got here. So, I think this. This, this goes a long way.
Good, good.
Um. And then to roll into the East Norwalk, uh, uh, bike parking. That is up and running as well. Um, the, uh, the. The train with the spiral bike rack off the back of it is in, it's installed. Um, it's directly under the, the street light. It, it looks great. Um, I, I think that's extremely comparable to the Shark Bike Rack that we put by the Maritime Garage. Um, it just, it. Gives a place. It's art, but it gives a place for you to park your bike securely. Um, and it just adds to the whole ambiance of the area, um. And, and because of, because it's a service mount installation. Um, you know, we do have some construction that will be going on in the area at some point with the Walk Bridge Program. So it will allow us, um, you know, once that. Is completed, if we find that there might be a more suitable location for it, or we wanted to expand bike parking in that area. It allows us to easily move that, um, and, and relocate it as needed.
That, that one in particular is very highly received from the Bike Walk Commission who. Appreciated the fact that it's, uh, you know, in, it's visible, uh, we're not hiding them in a corner, uh, and it's also well lit. Um, I do think that when we get the rap. On the final poll. That. As an authority, we should have you guys do a ribbon cutting and we could do several posts on, you know, on, on, you know, on the Parking Authority Park Norwalk's website, uh, Facebook page. Uh, and try to really start to bring that back, but also, you know, they, they, you know, put posts into like the I Love Norwalk. They're really, you know, these are really great. And I think it really speaks to, you know, the authority is really looking holistically at how parking is utilized and. You know, we didn't have any bike parking in East Norwalk, right? And we had people just. Literally, you know, tying their bikes to bushes and, and, you know, um, you know, thi- this, this, I think is a great win for you guys and I think that we should, uh, I think we should find a way to highlight it.
That sounds good, um.
All right, so as soon as we're, as soon as we are ready with the, uh. With, with the rap and, you know, within the two weeks, um. Then, uh, we'll, we will work with James to organize the time that we can get there and, uh, get the big ceremonial scissors out there and, uh, you guys take the ownership of, uh, of bike parking.
Beautiful, beautiful, thank you. Um, so then we're left with the Park Mobile gift card giveaway.
Yes, um, so we are, uh, at the, the, the very final stages of, of finalizing this program. We've got the, uh. We've got the list of, of the businesses, um, that we want to get the gift cards from. Um, we did, uh, we, I, I worked with Park Mobile's, um, legal team. To work on the, the verbiage, um. For the, the pop-up that you're going to receive when you use Park Mobile. Um, also the, um, there'll be a little link that says, uh, you know, learn more in the corner of the pop-up that will take you to another page. Or it'll explain more about. The program, um, and then it'll also provide you the rules. Um, which, uh, you know, was part of the reason I wanted to meet with the Park Mobile Legal Team, um. And basically you have to be opted in to, um, receive, uh, email communications from, from Park Mobile in order to qualify. Um, so we are finalizing the, the verbiage for that. Um, we may be, I was originally looking for December. First, you know, so we, through, uh. January one, so we could do it through the holiday season. It may be more like December second or third. Um, or we, we. Postpone it to, to January. Um, I'll know more in the next day or two. And then, uh, um, I can follow up via email. And, uh, and we can decide if we want, if we want to postpone it to all of January, or if we just wanna. You know, even though we're a day or two late, if we just want to move forward, um, with the program. Um, they did, they, they whipped it together pretty quickly. I saw a test of it. Um, and once you, once you finish the transaction and, and accept that transaction, that's when you'll, you'll receive the pop-up. And we also have s- spread the pop-up out where you won't, you will not receive one more than, uh. Or less than seven days apart. So if you receive one today, you will not receive another pop-up for seven days. We didn't want, if someone who constantly uses the app. We didn't want them to be bombarded with this pop-up every single time they go and pay for their parking. Um, but, you know, that, that gives them seven days of reprieve and then on the seventh day, they get a reminder in case they didn't, uh. Um, in case they didn't notice the pop-up or pay attention to it the first time.
So, um. What, what, what needs to happen on our end? You, you, I mean, the first or se- first and second are coming up quick, so.
Yeah.
Um.
I, I personally, I think, um, you know, not being able to have time to advance this, I, I don't think, I, I think. We might want to look at maybe February. February is a really great month for people going out to dinner for Valentine's and it might be a nice promotion to get. You know, people, uh, you know, coming to, to downtown, uh, coming into. Town after the holidays, um. And it, it maybe we could work with economic development and tie this into some type of dining program. Um, that, 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 that could be there, but. I just think that if we run it out. Even a day or two after December, it's almost, uh, you know, it's not, it's an afterthought, um.
Yeah.
But it's up to your board. It's up to you.
But, I mean, that makes sense to me. It feels a little.
Agreed.
It feels like it might fall flat, um.
Yeah, because we could start, we could start with a promotion and work with Snyder to get materials up. Um, and, cause I think this also. Might be an opportunity for these restaurants that, that we, that we go to, to start promoting that and use it as a way to, to, to engage people as well.
I think February is a good idea.
Yeah. Okay.
Fantastic.
Let's do that, um. So then, um. Back on the executive session. Small Business. Saturday, is it Small Business Saturday? Um, is probably going to occur before our next board meeting, so if we're gonna discuss this, we should. We're gonna need to. Get that going.
Now, Small Business Saturday already occurred. Already occurred. It's the second.
Twenty twenty-three. Oh, that's right. Oh, okay, sorry. Yeah, okay.
Yeah, no, it's, it's always the Saturday after Thanksgiving.
Okay.
On, on that note, do we want to do? Anything like that? For the holidays?
Um, I think we should talk about that in the executive session.
Yeah.
Uh. It, I mean, it. It feels a little, yeah, let's. Let's talk about it at that point.
Okay. Are, are we gonna do a separate meeting for that or is this?
I know, James, what do you, what, what do you think?
Um.
We can't, we can't do it tonight. Yeah, we can't do it tonight because we, it wasn't noticed.
Right. If you're, if you're looking to do something. Um, for the holidays, then I, then I think we have to do a. Um. A session in addition to. Because our next, uh, our next scheduled session is at the end of the month, so I'm not sure. Um, there would be enough time. Um, between the session and the holiday season.
Yeah, I, I think that you, I, you personally, I think that if you wanted to take it up, it could be an item in just e- executive session, but you have to have it on the agenda, so. Um. I, i- and I do think even if you had, if, if, once you hold a separate meeting, a- anything, I think anything again. After, you know, at this point is, is harder to execute. It may be. An opportunity at the next meeting, you put it on and then we can start to look at what that looks like for twenty twenty-three.
It, it feels like we should be talking about things for twenty twenty-three to me.
Yeah, I, I agree. I think it would, it, it's, it would be a little rushed to try to pull something off and have it meaningful at this point. And people know about it, because if people doesn't, don't, don't know about something you want to do, then. We don't have a lot of value in what we, in doing that.
Right. And I think once we start this discussion, it's gonna cover lots of. Different things and, um. And, you know. So. And that certainly. Uh, could be one of them.
Yeah, so you can put parking programs on the agenda for next month and then, and then if there's financial implications of it, take those up in executive session, uh, and then come back and vote on it, um, after.
Yeah, we should have a calendar of what. Of the programs we're going to have for twenty twenty-three of what we're going to do and set up a calendar. What days, you know.
Right, right, I agree.
So we'll. Discuss it at the next meeting then.
For twenty twenty-three, yeah.
Yes, yeah, I understand. Yep.
Yeah.
Okay, okay, good.
So James, make sure that's in your list for agenda items for, for the next meeting.
You bet.
Okay, um. If there's nothing further than, uh.
I got one. Question there.
Yeah.
Uh, uh, that three dollar, uh, conveyance fee, I guess, is that the right term, Jim?
Convenience fee, yes.
Convenience fee, uh, so my understanding is. That's going to be worked out in the new contract package. Is that what you're saying?
So, so I think that, you know, we are, you know, we're, we're looking at RP in general, right? So I think that RP should be inclusive into the contracts that we have. And then you look at that, look, look at those contracts and I think, you know, that contract should also look at, you know, is Duncan the provider that we want to look at? For the, you know, citation management, um, and if it, if it is, then we would negotiate one. If we want to go, I think that. You know, I, I, I personally think that everything should go out to bid on a regular basis, right? To ensure that we're getting the best price that we possibly can. Um, so I think that we should look at a bid for, you know, the citation management and in that include, you know, when, when that bid is, include that. We, you know, we, we look, we're looking at no convenience fee for credit card purchases.
And, and roughly, that would all happen. In. Two months, three months, six months?
So I think, so we're looking at the larger RFP for parking services right now. I think that you allow us the opportunity to get through that one and then we could move on to, um, you know, what, which one, I think that is. That, that. That RP process is bringing in like the contracts that are out there that we want to take a look at. Right? Um, and, you know, and that we have a totality and then from that we can start, start to dissect which ones that would get tied to a parking operator, which ones gets tied to the. Parking Authority itself and those that tied to the Parking Authority, we can start to dissect those and look at those individually, uh, ever, you know, re- regardless of, uh, of, of a parking operator.
Jim, correct me if I'm wrong, it would seem to me that all the terms for payment processing would be up for. Uh, discussion in accord, in conjunction with the, the bid. The RFP.
Um, so, you know, so I think one of the things that we're really looking at with the, with, with the larger RFP is contracts. You know, I, I believe the contracts should be written with the Parking Authority and not the parking operator. Right? Because, you, because every, you know, everything should be able to be sustained, you know, regardless of anyone that's in play, right? Um, and the contracts are really, you know, you, you're not an operator contract, but, uh, but the authority's contract, so we should be, we, you know, we're looking at. What are those contracts and how they should be incorporated into the authority versus the operator? Um, so I, I, in, in short, Matt, yes, I think, um, you know, they would come up into play with the, with the larger contract.
And I, I'm sorry to. Elongate this, but a- as I recall, they were trying to work backwards from June. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
June thirtieth, yep.
Fair enough. Thank you.
Good, okay, thanks.
Okay, everybody, thank you very much. This was, uh, this was a great meeting, um. And, um. So then, um. If there's no further discussion, we could have a motion to adjourn.
Take a motion to adjourn.
Pam, thank you. Second. Uh, Jeff, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Bye. All right, everybody. Have a great evening. Thank you.
And if I don't, if I don't talk to you, everyone have a wonderful holiday. But I'm sure I'll probably talk to you.
Yeah, thanks, Jeff.
All right, have a good one, everyone.
All right, have a good one, everybody.